Go ahead, any groups and individuals to address the council? So I guess we'll start. Jessica, if you're ready, we've got a Main Street in Morton Avenue in Bethel Campus extension on that.
Yes. Across from, I believe it's Whittaker Court or another drive there, the, there's going to be an extension of the street. There's an existing entrance off of 245 that just kind of stops. But there's going to be an extension of that future street that will extend to the Bethel Athletics Complex. And along with the Morton Avenue extension that was approved and constructed this past summer and is finishing up, that will extend all the way to this new proposed street and have a connector. And with that will come the extension of the street and some water and sewer utilities. So predominantly water. This is just going through the process of asking for service and the council requesting or granting that request that provided meets all required specifications and standards so that it can go, be accepted into our system and go through the division of water.
Once they put it at their cost, we're starting.
Yes, yes. They will be constructed at the developer's cost.
Y'all familiar with what we're, we're about, something about, you can't see where that intersection's kind of already been there, but they started on that Bethel market and Morton has already been extended for about three of those new businesses that started on, on that.
What's that?
I'm almost over.
Is that the extension as far as if you're talking about Bethel Athletics? I know that that kind of falls off down into lower elevation, right? Is that going in the future, requiring type of public station or anything?
No, there's actually a sewer vein in along Round Creek right now. It goes up and serves the other side of 245. So if there's an ability for that sewer to be tapped on in that valley at, in that trunk line, that 12-inch line, that will extend up and serve that peak end of Morton Avenue in the new proposed street. It doesn't yet have a name. I don't know what they're going to call it yet.
And then it comes off Sunset and goes into Wilson Industrial Park? Is that where that runs? Does it go over to Delaware?
Yes, it goes over and catches Wilson Industrial Park. What is that, the Barstown Mills and that section, Nutter Drive? All of that kind of goes to that valley right there.
That gets served off that line?
Mm-hmm, serves off that line.
Is there any issue on looping the line or?
For the water, actually the water main extension that this will tie to, there will be, I believe Main Street will need to pay in to a portion of a construction reimbursement contract for, there was a water main extension that came under 245 and extended over to the funeral home out to the west. So that water main extension, this, the main, they're creating on a preliminary plat that may be on one of these other tickets up for planning commission today or tonight for review. They're creating a lot 10. And so they'll pay into the construction reimbursement contract or agreement, per the agreement, per their lot frontage, for that lot they're creating. And then there's going to be service or extension, the main extension, that will extend down this proposed street and serve Bethel. There, Bethel's not actually tapping off of the line down in the holler, you know, downhill at the six, but they will through this street extension and water main extension that will come off of that. So anyway, there will be a loop. Currently, the water main on the Morton extension stops. I think there's a fire hydrant that you can visibly see, but this will create a loop there. And what's also nice is that it allows, everything right there facing 245 is at a higher elevation. And right now, everything on the other end at Lincoln Way is served off of the Hurstland Water Tank, which is at what we call the town pressure zone. And they have adequate pressure, but it is on the lower side. And as you have some of those lots that are at a higher elevation there on 245, this will allow us to serve this, these folks off of the Whittaker Tank Tower, which is a higher elevation and improve pressure and flow for those folks. So we'll kind of valve it off and have the upper end adjacent to 245 be on the high pressure zone, it'll be looped. And then folks like at the other end of Lincoln Way and that Bridge Boulevard will remain on town zone where their elevation's lower. So it's going to be improving service all around for that. We'll have the ability to serve.
If there's not any other questions, I need to ask them for a motion to approve the request of Main Street subdivision to accept the water main and gravity sewer main into our system, provided it is built to our specifications and approved by our engineering department.
So.
Motion by Councilman Williams, I have a second.
Second.
Second with Councilman Kelly. Any other discussion? All in favor, say goodbye saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? And then Jessica has handed out another request that we had gotten, but we failed to get it on the agenda. But Jessica, if you'd like to talk through that one as well from Mike Thompson.
Yes, Mr. Thompson is subdividing a small piece of property, I think he's creating off of a private road and serving four lots off of Whittaker Church Road. And it has the ability to, with a sewer main extension, to serve off of Miller Springs. And it's only for residential lots. There's some capacity available for the pump station to handle those lots. And it was worthwhile because that area doesn't always perk the ground as long as it perks well. So he's in the process of trotting that off and building one house. And this needs to go get approval to be, except he builds the main per our standards as we're reviewing it now. And then we'll take it into our system and upon its completion and its middle division of water. One thing I did mention, because sewer is generally considered a city service, that there would be a request for him to sign an annexation agreement for these four lots to come into the city as that is a city service. It doesn't guarantee that we will take them in, but they would object to annexation if the city so chose to.
Is that contiguous to make the Miller Springs?
It is. It's adjacent to Miller Springs, but it's contiguous.
So Jessica, like Miller Springs, are they responsible for the pump station? Do they have to put the money for that and then we take that over there, correct? So this guy kind of, nothing happened, he just gets to go right and use the pump station?
Right. He's having to do, he is having to do a main extension. He's not just able to just tap right into the sewer that's there. He's having to bring a main, I think it's probably five hundred feet or so, I don't remember these exact numbers, but to do so, to do that. One thing I will have to go back and check, and I haven't looked to see, again, we're talking about four home units, but I'll have to see if these four home units have paid into the Whiskey Springs construction reimbursement. So I'll need to check into that, if this qualifies for that or if Miller Springs. Because Miller Springs paid, I think based on the pump rate at the pump station. But I'll check all of that and verify and communicate with them if that's also something that he wanted to take care of.
Any other questions, Jessica? On this request, I need a motion then to accept the request of Mike Thompson to add four homes, four lots onto the Miller Springs sewer system, apply it per our specifications and with Jessica confirming any repayment of that Whiskey Springs investment that they have, reimbursement agreements with other people.
And to answer Joe's question a little better, I'm not sure that I did. He's also talked with Timmy Hutchins because he did have to get an easement through that Miller Springs green space to get to the sewer. So he's been in communication with him. If there's anything they worked out, I don't know.
Aye, they close. So kind of get motion on accepting this request. So the motion by Councilman Butler, I have a second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Dones. Any other discussion? All in favor, say goodbye saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. All right, Jessica, you're still up. You got your salt bid.
Yes, the, for the last, I want to say this was the third year that the City of Barstown has participated with other Kentucky cities and counties with the CAECO annual salt, reverse salt auction. This year, there was actually a technical difficulty for group four, which City of Barstown was in group four. So the website wasn't functioning very well. We noticed that there was only two bidders this time, and that was the result. So we received bid from Cargill and Detroit Salt Company, and they were double what we, the price was last year. So we are recommending that we not accept the bid because of those bidding technical difficulties. And CAECO is actually going to host a second auction for all of those communities that were involved in group four that will occur on July 12th. So all we need to do is just formally reject this bid and then we'll redo another advertisement, public advertisement for bid within 20 days before the 12th, and hopefully get better numbers. I do anticipate that the numbers are going to be higher than last year. I think last year we were paying around $59 a ton. But due to the really harsh winter that we had in the northeast, at the northeastern part of the country, folks just completely ran out of salt. In fact, we tried to order salt and I think the end of January, and our last year supplier, they could, they didn't have any to supply us. We tried ordering it again in May, they still did not have salt. So we weren't even able to purchase the salt under last year's salt auction because we filled the barn up this time last year, you know, from the previous winter. So we had a conversation with the folks at CAECO about that as well. So we're hoping that the folks that are participating, Cargill and Detroit Salt, are, they do have salt this year and are planning to honor those commitments. But I did want to mention that because of that shortage of salt, price, I do anticipate the price to be lower than $118, but to be, definitely be higher than $59 a ton.
Yeah, this looks like price gouging.
Well, they said that the other group said it'd be cheaper.
Yeah, the other ones.
On that, they called the diesel fuel was going up, there's a lot of transportation costs.
We don't take any.
And they might, they may not go out a whole lot.
Don't.
And plus, they're, I guess they got a lot of demand now.
Everybody's garage, everybody's barns are empty after the.
Probably most of all that demand now.
Supply and demand. So I'm hoping it will be lower than the $118, but I'm not expecting it to be a lot lower.
You said it was $15 a ton last year?
Like $59, I believe.
So it doesn't actually double.
And they wouldn't let us buy any more under our bid or?
The, I hadn't really heard of the company that supplied last year, but, or won the bid, but they just never had it. And there were, I had had a conversation with the folks, I believe it's Scott Martin at a CAECO, and they had had other cities that had the similar complaint and where they had even tried to supply salt to some folks because the barns had all gotten so low, all the supply houses, that even the folks that did receive salt were not happy with the quality and sent it back because it was so old and they'd set it at the very bottom.
Down to the bottom of the line.
So.
Gosh, I don't know what you should be bidding on that thing.
And that hasn't happened often. They're telling me that that's unusual.
But for them to catch back up, they want to be.
And they've already said that they were not going to be participating this year, obviously, because they don't have any salt.
Well, we don't, I guess we don't really have to take any full action on rejecting it, we just rebid it. Because whoever, these two companies at least have said they could supply us 200 tons at this price.
Yes.
So.
That's what.
I'm just trying, we just need to not accept the bids and.
We're just not going to take any action.
Go to, I guess.
You're saying they will.
I don't think so. I don't think we would have a motion to approve it if we don't want to accept so. I think it was.
I was just going to, a motion to reject it, you know, so that we could re-bid. It may be not necessary.
You don't necessarily need to reject it, dude. You just don't have to take any action. It's all right.
We have to reject it, because we set out a formal bidding.
We sent out a public notice that we were having a bid on that day.
And this bid, so I think we've got to take an action on rejecting it, I think. I'll leave it up to you now.
Well, I, the mayor was asking, if we don't accept the bid, I mean, we're not on, you know, under any kind of obligation, but if, if it's going to be formally rebid through CAECO and we are official participant in whatever that process is, are we part of that pool officially, I guess?
Yes. And I think that.
In other words, are we obligated to take whatever they?
Because they did participate in the bid, that, that's the thing. They didn't automatically reject all of this, all of group four. You can, we could have, other cities may have chosen to go ahead and take the bid. So that's why I wanted to, since we, and then we give notice to CAECO that we would like to participate in a rebid, but not everybody in group four may make that choice.
Okay, if that's, if it's not an all or.
It's not an all.
Yeah, then I think we probably ought to reject it officially by vote.
Okay. And ask for a motion then that we reject the May 10th online salt bid through CAECO?
I move.
And rebid it, advertise to rebid it.
I move.
Motion by Councilman Kelly, do I have a second?
Second.
Second with Councilman Dones. Any other discussion? All in favor, say goodbye saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, thank you, Jessica. Dan, looks like you've got it busy right ahead.
Yeah, it looks like. We have.
HRB recommendations.
Yeah, we have two recusals. First, Councilman Butler's going to recuse on the first one, which is JTD Holdings. And Councilman Butler, I ask you to go ahead and step out and we'll, we'll take it up. And then there's some that Councilman Dones has got to do, recuse, and we'll take the second group. This is COA 1848-48. JTD Holdings LLC applicant owner requests to have a condition of use permit for a building at 105 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation, approval for the condition of use permit.
We just need to take actions separately. Okay, I move that we adopt the recommendations, HRB on COA 1848.
Motion, I have a second.
Second.
Second with Councilman Butler. Any discussion? All in favor, say goodbye saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried.
If you, John or Keith, if you don't. There you go. Well, we're going to take the second group, which would be COA 1845 down to COA 1855. COA 1845, Teresa Reed, applicant owner requests to alter the landscaping at 114 West Broadway Street. Recommendation, approval to plant the proposed landscaping. COA 1849, Kentucky Farm Bureau, applicant owner requests to remove trees and install landscaping at 119 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation, approve, approval to plant the proposed landscaping. COA 1850, Wilson and Muir Bank and Trust, applicant owner requests to remove trees and replace the 107 North Third Street. Recommendation to remove, approval to remove the proposed trees and plant the new trees as presented in the application, removing proposed trees. COA 1852, Derby City Sign and Electric Eep, applicant Nicholas Scott, owner requests to install new signage at 106 West Flage Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed sign. COA 18-53, Lori Frazier Trail, applicant Nicholas Scott, owner requests to install a sign at 210 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed sign. COA 1855, Gene Wright, applicant owner requests to resurface a roof at 201 West Flage Street. Recommendation, approval to coat the roof with proposed materials and color. And so we need a vote on COAs 18-45, 49, 50, 52, 53, and 56. 55, excuse me, not 56.
Okay, there's been a motion then to approve the recommendations for the COAs.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, to approve HRB recommendations for COA 1845, COA 1849, COA 1850, COA 1852, COA 1853, and 1855 with the conditions therein.
Motion, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Williams. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say goodbye saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
And this last group, by Councilman Dones, is going to recuse himself. I'm going to start with COA 1856, Visa Construction, applicant Kentucky Al R E LLC, owner requests to install cornices at 110 West Flage Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed cornices. COA 1857, Visa Construction, applicant Kentucky Al R E LLC, owner requests to install wood shutters and hardware at 110 West Flage Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed shutters. Conditions, the applicant will provide a paint sample for the shutter hardware to the preservation coordinator for approval. COA 18-58, Visa Construction, applicant Kentucky Al R E LLC, owner requests to paint the fascia boards, gutters, downspouts, corbels, windows, cornices, soffits, and wood siding at 110 West Flage Street. Approval of the proposed paint colors is the recommendation. COA 1859, Visa Construction, applicant Kentucky Al R E LLC, owner requests to install hood exhaust roof vents at 110 West Flage Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed vents at the location specified. COA 18-60, Visa Construction, applicant Kentucky Al R E LLC, owner requests to remove window HVAC unit and replace the glass at 110 West Flage Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed glass at the location specified. COA 18-61, Visa Construction, applicant Kentucky Al R E LLC, owner requests to resurface the blacktop at 110 West Flage Street. Recommendation, approval to resurface the blacktop in the locations proposed. COA 18-62, Visa Construction, applicant Kentucky Al R E LLC, owner requests to replace rotten, rotted wood siding at, with redwood siding at 110 West Flage Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed wood siding. COA 18-63, Visa Construction, applicant Kentucky Al R E LLC, owner requests to replace the soffits and fascia boards at 110 West Flage Street. Recommendation, approval to replace the soffit and fascia boards. COA 18-64, Visa Construction, applicant Kentucky Al R E LLC, owner requests to replace a wood ramp with a concrete ramp at 110 West Flage Street. Recommendation, approval to replace the ramp with the proposed materials. COA 18-65, Visa Construction, applicant Kentucky Al R E LLC, owner requests to pour a concrete pad for HVAC unit at 110, 110 West Flage Street. Recommendation, approval to install the concrete plant, pad. Conditions, the final screening for the HVAC units would be staff approved by the preservation coordinator. COA 18-66, Visa Construction, applicant Kentucky Al R E LLC, owner requests to install a new exterior door at 110 West Flage Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed door. COA 18-67, Visa Construction, applicant Kentucky Al R E LLC, owner requests to remove a patio and replace it at 110 West Flage Street. Recommendation, approval to remove and replace the existing patio as proposed.
Okay, thank you, Dan. I'm going to need a motion then to, from COA 1856 through 65, 67. So the motion by Councilman Butler, do I have a second?
Second.
Second with Councilman Butler. Any discussion?
Mayor, that'll be with the conditions set forth by HRB.
Thank you. Okay, add that to the motions. Bishop, okay. All right, we have a motion and second with the conditions, approved with the conditions and specified. All in favor, say goodbye saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Dan?
Redness faces up to it.
The next thing is we have a request from Main Street for the street closure for their annual concert, which will be July 7th. This is the same request in the same area that we approved last year. Just for information purposes, the closure on West and East Flage, we only go half of those blocks that'll go to the alleys. So, you know, stop at, basically at Cruz Drugs on the west side and before you get to Forest Market on the east side. So I think that was quite spelled out.
The other restaurant, this fourth and second.
I got that clarified today by both Kim Houston and Jim Garland, who's the chairman of the committee, so they merged together, the concert committee, they did clarify that. So I told them I would cover that today if you are. That allows traffic to go in and out of the city parking lots and.
Yeah.
Turn around if they need to and all that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the street closure request with the addition that the east and west Flage closures extend to the first alleys on Hill Street, 2nd Third Street.
Necessary approvals from the state department. State highway. That's correct. Okay, any other questions? I've got a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Second, anything else can come from, any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say goodbye saying aye?
Aye.
Closure has been approved with the changes reflected in our motions. Everybody's had a chance to review the amendment. If there's not any corrections or additions, we're meeting on May the 8th, we're pre-named by unanimous consent unless there's any corrections. And the next one will be the second reading of our budget amendment. So I need a motion then to approve the second reading of budget amendment B 2018-12.
First, we have the second reading, then we ask for a motion.
I'm sorry.
And I'm ready to do that, Mayor, if you're all ready.
All right.
Ordinance number B 2018-12, ordinance amending and adopting as amended ordinance number B 2017-15, the City of Barstown's budget ordinance for the fiscal year July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018, whereas an annual budget for fiscal year 2017-18 was adopted by the City Council of Barstown on October 24th, 2017, and whereas there have been unanticipated, unanticipated changes in both revenues and expenditures during that period of time, now therefore being ordained by the City of Barstown that section one, the annual budget for the fiscal year 2017-18 be and hereby amended as follows. One, general fund increase anticipated revenues from $10,733,530 to $11,172,290. An increased authorized expenditures from $10,542,730 to $10,637,875. Two, combined utilities fund increase the anticipated revenues from $43,59,500 to $44,859,500. And increase expenditures from $42,704,641 to $44,504,641. Section two, annual, the annual budget is hereby amended and attached here too, reflecting the above reference amendments to the general and combined utilities funds, revenues and expenditures that comprise the FY 2017-2018 budget for the City of Barstown. Section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publications required by law. This summary was certified by me, Timothy Bowler, Simmons City Attorney.
Thank you, Dan. Right now, I would ask them for motion for the second reading, approve the second reading of ordinance B 2018-12, amended in fiscal year 1818 budget.
So.
I'm in, or I'd like to introduce ordinance number B 2000, or approve ordinance number B 2012. ordinance number B two thousand twelve, dash two thousand eighteen dash twelve, as a rated amendment.
Do we have a motion?
Second, may I?
Second by Councilman Williams, any other discussion? Seeing none, wanna start with individual votes, this second reading, I ask any, all of you all, sitting around saying aye, approve the amendment, sorry, Councilman Kelly?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Alright, so, tonight, we're gonna continue with our kind of report outs from the staff, and we had, uh, about half the staff from the last meeting, and some other people here tonight, and fortunately for them, they, they get to stay for the entire thing, but when we talk about some, some of them, their part of their budget will be addressed tonight, so it's good that we got you here anyhow, perhaps answering questions, we get into that, so. College Chief Pressing to give the report out on the police department.
Good evening. So, let's just start by staffing, I think that is one of our most important things in the police department, and I'm proud to say that we're fully staffed today, and we're no longer accepting applications at the Barstown Police Department, uh, so that's really important. Eight months ago, we had six vacancies, and being fully staffed, uh, it increases morale at the agency, it makes it possible for officers to be able to take vacation time, it gives officers the ability to be proactive instead of reactive, and it also allowed us to switch schedules from the twelve hour schedule to the ten hour schedule, and what was so big about that is it saved us a feature, uh, savings of about thirty-five thousand dollars in overtime, so that's a, a big cost savings for the city and the, and the, our budget. So, with that, when we were able to go from the twelve hour schedule to the ten hour schedule, we had four sergeants, so, we didn't eliminate a sergeant's position, we were able to repurpose that commanding officer's position, and so for the first time now, we actually have a commanding officer over our detectives, and so before, those detectives worked straight for the chief, so there was, uh, the oversight that, that I felt like they needed, uh, we were able, were able to give them more supervision now, by having that supervisor working directly with them, so now that we have a supervisor with them, we're able to task them with more duties. Uh, they now have a case management system, where we don't have cases that are falling through the crack, when an officer takes them, uh, where sometimes before those cases would get lost in the shuffle, there's actually, we have a system where each case that is taken on the street is being tracked, assigned, uh, they can be followed up in a timely manner to make sure where those are, those investigations, had they been adjudicated, and where they're at in the system, if someone calls to follow up on their cases, uh, we can tell who they've been assigned to and where they're at. The detective sergeant, one of his duties is crime mapping, that's something that we've not done here at Barstown, at the Barstown Police Department, so, we're utilizing the system that we have now with K Y O S, it does have a system, and we'll look for, uh, future systems that we can utilize, but right now it's working, where we can actually crap, we can actually map the crimes that we have in our community, and we can show the citizens what's happening in their neighborhoods, and we can do pin maps, and we can, and give visual aid of, of what's happening, and be very transparent, and so that's something that, uh, is being utilized, uh, every week by the detective sergeant, and it also gives a tool for our, for our whole team sergeants to be able to effectively utilize our resources better, instead of just having officers come and ride around the city, they're riding in areas where we're having problems, so if we're having break-ins in a specific neighborhood, then we're focusing in where our crimes occurring during the times that they're occurring, so we're, we can be in the areas to, to affect those better. Moving on, and this will touch a little bit, and, and they answer some questions with our budget, uh, with our vehicles. The city capitalization, uh, policy that we have currently, it states that the useful life of passenger vehicles is three to seven years, but realistically with police cars, five years is about the time where we start having a lot of problems with vehicles, by the time you get high mileage, and we start spending a lot of money on repairing those vehicles. Currently, our fleet, we have twelve vehicles that are over five years old right now, we have two cars that are twenty-one years old, one that's seventeen, one that's twelve, two that are eight years old, two that are seven, and four that are over six years old, so in our budget, if our budget's approved, we're looking to utilize a hundred and ninety thousand dollars to purchase five replacement vehicles, to upgrade our fleet. Another thing, just to update, is in our training department, uh, our officers have, oh yes, yes sir.
Question on your vehicles here?
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that the person with the vehicle to state price be?
Yes.
And also equip them too?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and you'll see the, the, the decrease in, in the, what we had from the last year, and, and the dec, the decrease in that is, we're looking at some different options this year to try to save money, and we're looking, we were looking to try to just decrease our, our budget, so, last year, we equipped, uh, vehicles and we won't be explorers, and to purchase the explorers and to equip them, it costs us about forty-five thousand dollars for, for the explorers by the time we bought the explorers and equipped them, and so we're looking at possibly exploring, uh, uh, purchasing the Dodge Chargers, and for, if we, if we go that route, and if we purchase those, and we're gonna do some more, uh, we're, we're gonna look into that a little bit more, but if we go that route, and we've talked to several agencies that are currently using them, and they're very happy with those vehicles, to purchase the Dodge Explorer and to outfit it, it's approximately thirty-four thousand dollars a vehicle, and it comes with a five-year powertrain warranty, so, uh, by the time we get to a hundred thousand miles, we're gonna spend a lot less money in, in maintenance of those vehicles, so that's, that's an option that we're exploring, and we're gonna talk to several other agencies before we get there, but that's definitely an option, that we may be able to get some vehicles, um, at a cheaper price. Now, that's not to say that we're gonna go that way, we're gonna have a mixture of fleet, we're not gonna have all Dodge Chargers, uh, some of the, uh, agencies do Durandos, there's a mixture of fleets, we don't wanna have just one vehicle, uh, so that's something that we're looking at as an option.
You said with the Dodge Chargers that, uh, it's a hundred thousand mile powertrain warranty?
Yes, sir.
Is that something that's changed with the police package? Goes currently, they only have a sixty thousand mile warranty. They did, they do, they did through two thousand fifteen, but in two thousand sixteen they changed.
I can, I know Assistant Chief Sealy was looking into that, and he said it was a five-year, uh, powertrain warranty up to a hundred thousand miles, so we'll, we'll check it.
You'll probably get a hundred thousand before you get five years.
Yes, sir.
At least you'll have, if it's, has changed, at least you'll have a hundred thousand, whereas I think the other two options don't have a hundred thousand on powertrain.
Yes, sir.
You should prefer that.
We, we definitely will before we, we go any further with those. In our, updating our training department, our officers have just completed, uh, our firearms qualification, one of the things that we did this year with our firearms qualification was, they were introduced to combat shooting, uh, the difference with that is, instead of just, when they're doing qualification, instead of standing at a, a lot and do static shooting, they were shooting on the move, which is, uh, something that you would do if you're faced with active shooter, and they were introduced into that kind of shooting this year, uh, and it was, it's, it's information that you're faced with at the time that you're, uh, at the time they're given during qualifications, they all did really good at the qualifications, and we didn't have any problems there. The department is almost one hundred percent fully CIT trained, we have two officers to go in that training, and then will be a hundred percent trained, that's something that's really important, CIT is crisis intervention training, I think that is something that's important for our agency, so when we respond to runs with anyone in our community that's, uh, in a, a crisis situation, our officers will be trained in how to handle those situations, um, we are fully trained and carry a Narcan, that's a, a crisis that has hit every community, and if we can be that next step to help someone save a life, that's in a situation that is overdose, that could potentially get them help, uh, that is something that, uh, I think that we should be doing. We're getting ready to start drivers training, that step starts next week, hopefully that will help reduce future accidents. Uh, we have a formalized internal affairs process that has been put in place, uh, if, if citizens have issues, uh, if, in, once they encounter our officers, which we hope that we're respectful on all encounters, but if something happens and they feel that we have done something, uh, inappropriately, or we violated our policies, we do have a formalized process that has been put in place. We have a formalized, uh, field training program that has been established in the last six months for our officers that come out of recruit school, and then just quickly, the officers have been trained on the firearms policy, use of force, active shooter, asked pursuit policies, uh, one thing to put out to all of our council here, we currently have the T I simulator that is at the department, you all are invited to come and participate in that training, uh, we will have that through June the twelfth, uh, our officers are being trained on that currently, each of them go through approximately ten scenarios, it is a, uh, basically, it is a big huge screen, it's like a big video game to you all, but it puts them through a stressful situation, and they have to determine, uh, how they would interact in those situations, and transition through different tools, uh, and it's a good training tool for them, uh, and if you would like to see some of the training that these officers are going through, in situations that they may encounter on the street, uh, you're very welcome to come by the station and go through that training, to see what, some of the training that the officers are going through right now. And some of the scenarios that have been put in it this year is, uh, they're faced with individuals that, uh, have, uh, mental illness and hearing impaired, and, uh, and of course, depending on how officers deal with the situations, it could end peacefully, or it could be, end, end up in force, so, I encourage you all to come by and do that. The last two things is, you will notice in the next probably couple weeks, the tip line will be put on the back of our police cars, uh, where you see our website on the police cars, it'll be, it'll just like that in white numbers underneath, it'll just say three four eight heat, we wanna continue to get that out, and the Path Coalition has offered to purchase magnets to be mailed to the households in, uh, the city and the county, to get that word out, uh, from the Path Coalition, and then, uh, the last thing is, Jason Ellis's, um, five-year, uh, five-year memorial is on Friday at the cemetery at ten a.m., uh, I encourage everyone to please come and support his family, if you're able to, uh, fit that into your schedule, I know the family would appreciate that support.
That'll be in chaplains, so, direct.
In the chaplain, yes, sir.
Anything else, Chief?
No, sir.
Thank you. Oh, Jeffrey, you, you have your recreation company?
Yes. We've been extremely busy with the projects, programming, and, uh, grass mowing, uh, we've been working on the pool that officially opened June second, um, we're doing some finishing touches, uh, cleaning up a few issues, uh, but everything's looking good, uh, we're taking registration for all the programming at the pool, uh, water obics, swim lessons, swim team, um, we're all available on the website right now, and they're actually filling up pretty fast, um, we've got pool rentals filling up fast for the summer, uh, typically, we don't get as many as we already have now, so, I'm pretty pleased with that, and we're still looking to hire a few more lifeguards for the pool, um, we've already got, uh, three committed, so we're gonna get two more, uh, for that. Barstown Community Park, uh, B C D construction is almost complete with the bathroom facility down there, um, Ben Berg's been a big help with his crew, uh, they're gonna be helping with the water and the sewer lines to support the facility, um, and Jeff Miller, uh, himself as well, with the electric to the building, uh, that should be, they're gonna be completed by the end of the week, depending on if we can get his stuff taken care of, uh, and should be operational, hopefully this March weekend, uh, and the new pavilion has been ordered, uh, it should come in closer to the end of the month, uh, we're gonna put that up in-house, uh, it's a pretty fat kit, so, Ben's gonna help us with that as well, uh, with their equipment, uh, parking lot and basketball court, uh, it's gonna be sorted out, now that mostly heavy equipment's gonna be out of the park, we can go ahead and look at getting that knocked out, uh, been talking with Mago to get that taken care of, and then, uh, we're continually working on the nature trails, uh, with the grass mowing and everything, it's slowed it down quite a bit, but, continue to work on them, there's still a lot of use down there on them, uh, so the people are pretty pleased with the way they're looking so far, you're not, here is muddy and whatnot, as it used to be walking up. The, uh, concerts start this Friday at the park, we've got free concerts every Friday, starting this Friday, uh, they'll be at seven o'clock, uh, the first band is the Barstown High School Band, their orchestra and their chorus, they'll be down there, um, so I encourage everybody to come and look, uh, the schedules are out, there's a band each Friday, uh, from here until Labor Day. We finished up our basketball leagues a few weeks ago, uh, we finished up adult high school, adult league and a high school league, uh, both ended pretty well, um, everybody's looking forward to playing again next season, uh, we're opening up registration for another volleyball season this summer, and then we're gonna have an adult kickball league and a youth kickball league, uh, we're gonna play those up here on the Don Harp Little League Field, and there's been a lot of interest in those, several phone calls, and people really excited, companies are getting teams together to participate in the kickball league and the volleyball league, so, pretty excited about that, uh, we've got a couple issues we're trying to get cleaned up before the end of the fiscal year, sealing the gym roof, and, uh, trying to get some leaks repaired on the old building, uh, and that's where we stand right now.
Are you putting, you have any leads or anything to the COVID building?
Not yet, we're trying to get the volleyball league in there, uh, for the summer, but we've been talking with Philip, and we're not sure that we can get under the court to install the adapters, put the holes in the ground in the court, so I'm not sure we're gonna be able to utilize that for volleyball. Right now, cheerleading's been in there, uh, and then we have a couple rentals in there during the week right now, a little reason for.
Great, you're, I think you're impressively, the basketball leagues are at their time?
Constantly during the winter, yeah, yeah, they're just slowing up now, we try to run the, the younger kids in that gym and the older guys here, is what we're looking to do, so.
Daniel, uh, one of the concerns, uh, some people had expressed to me regarding the pool was, they didn't have enough seating space, by the way, that's been rectified, you got a lot of chairs.
Yeah, we actually, I got, uh, I think it was about a hundred chairs on the government deals on an auction site, um, that I got for about five hundred dollars, um, so, you know, it was probably twenty thousand dollars worth of chairs, uh, for five hundred dollars, and, you know, all of them weren't good, but we got good solid eight chairs out on the bull deck, they're full lounge chairs, and, uh, we had them for the first time last season, and people just love them, so, can't say nothing about them. Yes, sir.
Do you ever get your request, or anybody concerned or asked about pickleball?
Well, pickleball, it doesn't actually go through us, uh, but pickleball goes on every Tuesday and Thursday, it's a go-back gym.
Oh, we do have a, a body, uh?
Yeah, every Tuesday, Thursday morning, there's a group that goes in and plays, I think it started eight o'clock, Tuesday, Thursday mornings, uh, and that was done during previous administration, they used to be in our gym, and we facilitated, and then they, uh, weren't exactly happy with this gym, so they, they wanted more private area, so they worked out some deals, but yeah, they, they encourage everybody to come and participate with them.
You have other questions, Daniel? Thank you, Daniel. Jessica, I want you to, you're picking up some of the band stuff.
Yes. Trying to get a lot of projects off the ground and planned for this coming fiscal year, and some projects trying to finish up this fiscal year, we, uh, got nearly all of our, uh, resurfacing done on the streets, so if you drive around, a lot of the streets are looking pretty good, um, Flage A project is, is completed, and I'm really pleased with how that water drainage project has turned out, it really looks like a whole new street, probably, it's, pretty much is a whole new street through there, um, been going out and doing some additional sidewalk evaluations, uh, looking at doing, getting precision concrete, cutting those other guys that kinda cut those trip hazards down, getting them back in town, and, uh, cutting some more of the areas they've already surveyed last year for us, and kinda starting that sidewalk, uh, program a little bit here this summer, with all the schools are out and so forth. We, uh, Trademark is the contractor that's now, uh, on-site, they're doing the Mockingbird, O'Brien, Second Street Sewer Project that was bid out earlier in the, the spring, uh, they've got materials ordered, they've started doing some. They've started doing some cutting on the pavement in preparation for the project, doing some clearing, uh, kind of getting everything prepared so that the materials, uh, are completed and shipped, that they can get started on that. Another project also underway, the contractor's on-site is the, uh, at the water treatment plant, the Chloramine Conversion Judy Construction is on-site, has, uh, taken out a section of the hill there behind, uh, the existing clear wells and they're prepping for pouring their footers and so forth for that new Chloramine building. So that's going on. We're gonna have our first, uh, progress meeting at the water plant on Tuesday next week. Um, the Rowan Creek Trunk Sewer Project that HDR Engineering is designing for us, they sent me the set of plans, uh, haven't even had a chance to open them yet. They just got them, uh, this morning. So preliminary set of plans for us to look at, it's some of the work that you see in the budget for this coming fiscal year that we plan to get construction kind of kicked off for. Um, but the preliminary layout and some design concepts for the improvement we need to make at the water, at the wastewater treatment plant there at Town Creek at the headworks. We're looking at putting in some screens, some micro screens to try to catch a lot of the debris that's kind of being very difficult on our, um, aerators and equipment there at the plant. Also looking at upgrading the pipe through the plant. I think we, a couple of years ago, we, from the headworks for the flow first comes into the facility and makes it to the first distribution box, we upgraded from a 24 to a 36. Our Town Creek trunk main is, was upgraded in 2009 to a 36-inch trunk line, but yet we were only a 24 through the plant. So we're gonna finish that 24 and from that point where we stopped previously and get it to a 36 all the way to the living wing. So that's part of our project that'll be a contract, uh, at the treatment plant. And we also have a project worth the Potter Shop pump station. They're working on those, finalizing those design plans as well to upgrade that station along with the trunk itself, the trunk line. Um, looking at some EDA funding for that, we got, our preliminary application was approved. Um, now we've been moved, we're moving forward for a full application process. I hope we'll hear something, uh, within the coming month or two. The, uh, KIA, we did end up on this, these projects, these sewer projects, did end up on the intended use plan for KIA. However, because there are so many communities out there when it comes to sewer that have a lot worse problems than us, we didn't rank as high on that list. So we're further down the list. There's a possibility that we may not qualify for those monies because the good thing is, is we are not under an agreed order or a consent decree or anything like that. We've been doing a pretty good job staying on top of those, uh, our sewer issues, but, um, as a result, we may have to look at other funding options for some of this work that we need to do. The multi-use path, uh, also have a preliminary design that were laid out with QK floor, uh, looking at those design plans and have a meeting set up next week with the State Highway Department and we're gonna kind of go through that, this plan and see what other finalizations we need to do. We're hoping to bid, uh, the project in, I think it's the end of June is when, uh, we're hoping to bid. Now, we prob, more than likely, because RJ Corman, that process just takes more time to go through their process and get that crossing there on John Rowan Boulevard approved and under blessed and, uh, any of those items worked out, we'll, we may do an alternate bid and have the first phase of the construction bid out and stop at Paget Drive. So we'll go from Mago, uh, where it stopped then from Mago Construction there, just past 62 Blue Collado, and it'll continue to, um, I guess that would be Planet Fitness, you know, that intersection and have crossings to cross you over to Paget. We're also looking at adding a, a crossing at 62 that would take you over to the Safelot corridor and having a sidewalk that just takes you up to Safelot's parking lot. So we have a little bit of coordination to do there just because the access road there isn't super easy. The grades are tough, you know, to try to come on around along 245, but just to come at that intersection and cross the street and get you up to, to shop at Safelot may be a, a safe option and an economical option. Uh, we're also having, gonna have a crosswalk or a crossing at the Ben Fry intersection there. In Public Works, we're looking at doing in-house, extending the sidewalk from that intersection on the north side. I guess it would be the car wash and the music side. We're looking at the car wash side and just running sidewalk from that point on it to where the sidewalk stops there at, I want to say that's.
Wibble?
Wibble, Wibble, however you pronounce that and run it along the way across. So it'll have some connectivity. It's not an overly long distance and I think that will provide, uh, some of those neighborhood connectivity to this path. So that's where we are right now. Uh, just also contacted KIA, uh, office today on our, uh, loan execution agreement for the Wat- Chloramine project. They were asking me if I was gonna ask for, uh, reimbursement. Still waiting for you to send me the agreement back signed so that I can do that. So we're getting that paperwork figured out. I think, I think it is there, um, we've had it for a bit, but trying to get that figured out. There's just been a lot of, uh, a lot of plans coming in for the, construction is definitely booming right now, so our offices are staying pretty busy with utility locates and, um, just plan review, you know, preliminary flats and lots of inquiries about property and what services are available and, and those types of things. And in fact, I anticipate with the Round Creek project and the lack of subdivision, you know, a lot of available lots that there's the potential for the, we've talked about it in our preliminary engineering report, having a trunk line that would connect, um, continue up a little further north in Round Creek there at Toolmore, continue up Round Creek, kind of come in behind early times and tied to Woodline Springs. And that would allow us to eliminate, uh, Woodline Springs Pump Station along with another pump station, but also have that trunk size such that the growth could continue, kind of an infill development. So there's property to the north of Woodline Springs and along that corridor that's vacant land that's already kind of set up for, from an infrastructure standpoint, that, that makes a lot of good sense. So rather than having a future developer looking to put in, spend that money on upgrading the pump station or adding a pump station, that they would contribute to that section of trunk line and be smart growth for us as a utility and the community and the residents that live in those areas. That's pretty much it, just trying to work on budget stuff.
Can you just add, uh, Judge Watts and I were in a meeting with the district board people a few weeks ago. We talked about this sidewalk and, uh, the reasoning it's gonna be located on the south side because it aligns with the sidewalk that's from 62 to 150, which is already on the south side. And so we talked a lot about the connectivity because most of the retail and the residential is on the north side. So that's why Jessica's talked about moving on to make sure we can try to get as many safe crosswalks. So the concern of the retail and residential people on the north side, uh, by allowing them to get over to the south side of the sidewalk to safely navigate up the sidewalk, but then be able to get across in more than one spot if possible, uh, to those retail areas and residential areas. So, uh, we're working on that. Not sure we can get them all done, uh, we'll go over budget probably, uh, but maybe we could start, uh, maybe get one or two and then work on a third one at a later date. So that's part of that discussion.
Right. And I'm trying to utilize some of our existing sidewalk repair and kind of infill money that I budgeted this year. Uh, if I have those opportunities where if I cut a few more sidewalks that's a little cheaper than the replaced, that might free up some of those monies to kind of make some of those short-run connect, connection points. And there's not very many in that project and we, you said, we'll just phase that in as we go.
Any other questions, Jessica? Greg Ashworth was supposed to be here, but he asked me if he could, uh, be excused by, he had a, a little bit of, and he had a son graduating from eighth grade. And I told him, I said, I think we can, uh, make it through. But if you do have any questions, I mean, I can tell you, he attended an HR, uh, conference last week and he's been working. I know there's been a lot of personnel, uh, changes with the new hires and so forth. We handle a lot of that and working on our insurance for the coming years, so he's staying, uh, pretty busy, but, uh, I haven't even had a chance to debrief him on his conference from last week yet, but I think we have three days of that, so I most, I consider it was very, uh, helpful to him. So if you have any questions of Greg, certainly give him a call or come by and see him anytime. Um, you had a chance to look at the cemetery committee meeting, minutes, uh, questions on that. Uh, under unfinished business, it's kind of, that is what I'm gonna talk about, but under unfinished business, we'll be closing with the Newcombe Oil Property here in just the next couple of days or so. I think we got, we got the draft of the deed done and they're working on a closing, getting the closing statement done. Some of that's been done, all the new calls have been made. Uh, under new business, we have closed with the Kentucky Home Village property and the Church of Christ property. And we have, uh, we put out a, an RFP for architects to help us with the planning to renovate, uh, the Newcombe property for the fire department and some other city uses as well as renovating City Hall for continuing to be used partly for the fire department, but the other side of, the other part of their business be used for head end and engineering. And, uh, we selected Keys Architects, which are out of, uh, Wibble. They've got a, uh, a lot, a lot of history, uh, with, uh, fire departments and emergency construction. I think they, I found out they have done 22, uh, projects basically in, uh, our area. Bullock County, Jefferson County, Shelby County, Henry County, uh, that's just fire department and emergency services kind of projects that they've done. Here in Nelson County, they have got, they've done 30 projects, everything from, like, some of the new distilleries, the existing distilleries to the Bethlehem Project that we talked about earlier, uh, the Stephen Foster Drama, uh, stage project, we're probably all working on that, so, uh, they're gonna give us an initial development plan and then a set of construction plans, both for the Newcombe Oil Property renovation project and the City Hall renovation project. So we've selected them, they've got a good track record, uh, here in Nelson County, but also in, in the type of work that we're gonna be needing. So, uh, that's kind of what's going on under new business and old business or unfinished business. Next city council members, anybody in the council, obviously bring before the council this evening?
Yes, Mayor, in, in going through, going through this budget, which is, I'd like to commend you and Tracy Hudson and all the other department heads for their thorough, uh, uh, management of their budgets and, and have cost effective and cost conscious they've been as far as managing, managing the city finances. Uh, they, from looking through this budget, they've, uh, they've done a pretty good job on all of the behalf in that matter.
Uh, I was looking there at the, of the administration here, of the different organizations that the city app supports. I've noticed that you've also added in here a little, a little token of, uh, request for ethics commission. I, I can understand why, but you could, you might explain why.
Well, uh, when the ethics commission was originally created, NUSCAT, this support was responsible for retaining of the records and providing a staff person to, uh, help run the minutes, uh, run those meetings, keep the minutes. Uh, the city took it over, I think, about 13 or years ago, something like that. So we've had it for about 13 years and, uh, so I thought it was time for, uh, maybe us to give up, you know, we're, we're providing a staff person, we're handling all the meetings, conducting all the meetings here on that. So the judge and I have talked about possibly, uh, maybe subbing that work out to a, uh, a law firm, just because, uh, you don't have a city employee having to be tied into running ethics meetings and being subject to, uh, all the open record stuff as well as, uh, having meetings announced properly or questions about whether the meetings are being conducted in the proper manner and so forth. So, uh, that, uh, that's not happened yet, but we felt like there would, we might incur a little additional cost if we subbed that work out to, uh, a, another, like I say, a law firm and a paralegal to handle that for us. It's just a matter of fiscal court, their, their people are slammed with work and, uh, I know Mary and her department slammed with work, so that was.
I think, I think it's a good, I think it's a good move on, on your part and, and the judge's part because, uh, been having to deal with it. You don't deal with that often, but a lot of times, uh, people think that is some, some of those ethic issues are kind of nuisance issues more so than any, but, but to tie up staff members for stuff that, that, uh, that really shouldn't be. The city shouldn't be the one responsible for that.
We're subsidizing that at this point and I would go into all things, but we, just this year, I can vouch for Mary to spend a ton of time, uh, with ethics related stuff and open records related to ethics and so forth. And, uh, if, you know, we don't, we don't, we're not able to bill anybody for that. We, uh, we just have to do it. So, uh, we think the judge and I were exploring that option, so I felt like putting some money in the budget should we get to that point. We'll bring that back to you, obviously, before we do it.
And this other line item that hadn't been here before, this, uh, community contributions, uh, you and I chatted about that a little bit, uh, when I talked about that. But, uh, and, and I'm assuming that that's for situations where different groups or organizations come before the, the council requesting assistance in, uh, situations like, uh, street concert, buttermilk bays, uh, like ours, council, different drama, uh, old Barcel Village or situation like that, that, uh, we're forced up to be in a situation now where we could, uh, contribute to, to those, uh, looking at the budget, we contribute to that. Uh, I would probably make a recommendation from all the different aspects there, that you might increase that to $25,000.
We can get a look at that. Just for some background on that, where that came from is we do get a lot of requests from different groups, uh, every year for things such as what Bill just mentioned. And we've addressed them a lot of times just out of our contingency money and that doesn't really go that far with the council's contingency as well as the mayor's contingency. So I'm checking with Tracy, she felt like we could fund, uh, fund a line item now that we're in a little better financial shape. So, uh, talking to Tim Butler about it as well. And so we felt like we wanted to add a line item so that we could support, uh, community projects provided they meet the criteria spelled out by the statute. I think Tim, you could probably talk to that for a second if you would.
Yeah, that's, it's the same thing we've dealt with, like we dealt with just recently with the, uh, the reception. You know, you gotta have, it's gotta be certain criteria and, um, and in the past, I think there's been some issue about, you know, the contingency was like a catch-all. It was like there were competing interests for that money. And now there's a, a specific pot and the contingency can be, I guess, what it was originally, you know, put aside for, so.
So, uh, we can get into a little more discussion on that as we get into the budget discussion, but that, that is the reason behind adding that line item because, uh, we've already gotten several letters, uh, already this year asking for some assistance and, uh, totally could address it with this new budget company after, if we work that out.
It's actually called something else, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Understood the Mayor's Office, meaning a grant.
Community Development Fund?
Yeah.
Me and Development.
It's more like a grant application process.
Uh, we may not have that, uh, name that way of the line item right now.
It's not in here, but it is not updated.
Right. Maybe we call it Community Development Funds. And there would be an application process and of course we'd have to be, uh, we'd have to refer that to the city attorney and make sure that the request is one that we can, uh, legally, uh, support based on the criteria of use of public funds. Okay, uh, with that, um, just, uh... Okay, with that, just before we get into the budget discussion, any other comments from council members? If not, we have cemetery deeds, Roy Neil and Charlene Ann Thompson, two graves. Brenda G. Hagan, one grave. William L. and Brenda G. Hagan, one grave. And then Diana Leachman, one grave. We can do that back in nine percent. So now if we would, we could move into the budget that we've had some discussion just now, but we could go more in tonight. What I thought we were doing is we go into the general fund side of the budget. Then at our next meeting, we go into the utility side and that still, it gives us time if we need another meeting, if we have a special meeting if necessary, to have more discussion. And then that still gives us two meetings in June to do the first and second reading. So we have a work session in June, which would be the second meeting or we can always call a special meeting if needed. And then the last two meetings of June would be first and second reading hopefully. So if, you know, if you, I guess if you want, I mean, we can have, finish up the discussion since I think those community development funds do fall kind of under admin. We talked about that since that's a general fund item. I originally proposed fifteen thousand, I didn't really have any specific request at the time, other than one. But that was for twenty-five hundred dollars. But since then, I know we just heard, just here recently that the Main Street, Street Concert had lost a major sponsor. And in the past, we have supported that, but I think the last two or three years, we have not funded that in any fashion because they've gotten a major sponsor. Now they've lost a five thousand dollar sponsor, so that could possibly be one need that could be funded out in the next budget because that's a July eighth project. But I'm open to any suggestions or more discussion on that line item. I suggest a fifteen thousand, Councilor Jeff said twenty-five thousand. I didn't really have a, I was in the big fifteen, I was starting.
It's a number on the check.
It's, uh.
I don't think it's in the.
It's not in there.
It's not in here, you don't.
Yeah, not in there.
It is in there.
It's locked in.
I've been, I've been using this.
It's back here.
It's in, it's right under.
Yeah.
What line number is that?
Sixty-two. So did you all want a separate line item for that?
Mayor, you had mentioned that you had some, several other applicants kind of lined up for that. Do you have an idea of the total or?
Well, I, I know the, I've gotten a request for twenty-five hundred dollars from the Bohn and Cherry School Building from Kerry Stivers, twenty-five hundred, they're putting a new roof on that building. We've gotten a request from now, Steve Foster Drama Associations, gotten their provisional estimates of the project to rebuild the stage area. They've asked for ten thousand. We've got another request from Old Barstown Village. All the log cabins and down, which are actually on property lease from the city. They need a lot of work on, chipping is bad on the log cabins as well, they've got a number of other maintenance issues down there. I didn't, I haven't heard them before yet, once we get the budget approved, assuming we have a line item, but I would formally submit those to you all for consideration. But that's three I know, plus the, I think Main Street is going to possibly ask us for some help on the street hall. So, and we, we've, that's been anywhere, when we did fund that was five thousand, a couple, some years, and twenty-five hundred some years, so. Do the quick math, you'd get up to twenty-five thousand pretty quick. So.
Yes, yeah, just giving a, kind of get an idea of what was out there. If twenty-five was a, was a realistic number or something that.
And I don't know, we could do, do everything for everybody, but you know, I think these twenty-five hundred and five thousand dollar possible grants would spread that amount of money out with the government. So unless there's any objections, we can have Tracy put twenty-five thousand in that line item.
So small percentage of our overall budget's up.
Yeah.
It's a great investment, you know.
That's going to need some contingency money, also there's some other things that come along, you know, that might not be as big as the rest of these could possibly use, they need the criteria of the council as well as the mayor's. Okay, let's go back then, get back into the general fund side. And I'll just kind of let you all ask questions. I've been through this and Tracy and I have been through this about four times. So I've, we've cut and diced and moved and added and subtracted and I'm pretty comfortable with it as we've got it at this point. Would you like to again cover the fact about the, we're not using indirect costs again? That's really one of the main things that has helped the general fund.
Yeah, I may not do a very good job of explaining it. I was created years ago, that one was created by Michael before that, many fingers. The many things that created the dividend. The indirect cost covers, it was used in order to balance the budget. It was never intended to be as much as it has been in the past few budget years. But what it does is we take the revenues of all the utilities and if we need a million dollars to balance the general fund, we put that number in and then each department based on the revenues pays into a dividend. So there's really no rhyme or reason on how to choose. So instead of doing that, I talked with Linda to get her take on it because I know in the past she never really liked it because on their part it's not clean and on our part it is very clean for us. So now we've taken elected officials' wages, salaries and wages and everything associated with that. And any supplies that, like admin orders that everybody uses is now going to be spread across all the utilities and part of admin and fire and police. So basically all the departments are out, other than all of it, all the utilities and then making this revenue.
And how's the formula based?
Uh, I, I placed it.
So you had ten percent maybe for like the council salaries on the one part and spread out on the other part too.
Right now I have it set up as the customer service reps, how they're allocated out in utilities. I haven't really honestly spent a lot of time on a good way to figure out how much time do you all spend on water ordinances, water issues versus sewer issues versus cable.
And how do they do the customer service, what is the formula on that too?
It is, the majority, it's based on customers, the customer accounts versus the utility. So we have twelve thousand water customer versus I think eleven thousand cable internet customers and then we only have forty-two hundred electric customers. So it's whatever percentage, percentage of the utility makes up of it is the whole, all customers together.
Yeah, I like that better than just taking a end figure and then do that. And that's probably more, I won't say more legal. Probably it's defensible, defensible, that's okay.
And if there's a suggestion, can I come in and you like?
No, I, 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 by law, that's, want to make sure it's something better than the, what we need and then we go, I have to grab what we need because I.
Well, auditors never did like the idea of us taking revenue from the utility department to balance the general fund. That's always been a sort of, with, with our general audit. Of course, from a city point of view, to try to make the, the budgets balance out, the revenue cow was the utilities. And so that formula with indirect cost allocation that Tracy's been talking about, that was a way of doing it where the, the people that like the, the employees and stuff that did, that in the, in the, that handled a lot of the utility situations like water, sewer, cable, or you know, they were, it's kind of spread out. And the, and the bigger revenue producing departments bore the brunt of the indirect cost, how it costs allocation.
Yeah, and I saw some line, line item, you were all under administration. Apparently that expense is all administration, some of this involve utilities and things. And then some of them weren't allocated a little bit differently, I guess, because maybe it ended up going across the whole board or something.
Like for Shay, for instance, she's strictly a senior admin because all she does is take her DCs on.
One thing I noticed, Tracy Under, when we were talking about admin, you know, previously we had a line item of fifty-one hundred for elected officials. But now this coming budget, I know you said you were going to move their salaries similar to your own because we don't, our work or the work of the council, the mayor is really for all the departments.
Right.
It's not admin, but you, you still have about seventy-two hundred, so that's their share of that.
That's the admin's share of.
It was seventy-two thousand.
Right.
Right.
So she's reduced that, that's the reason that's been reduced. And the rest of the future salaries of council and mayor will be spread along the other departments like she's doing with admin and so forth.
I want it this way better too.
And I'll go back and make a fifty-one hundred in each department so that you can see, so that everybody can see what kind of salary.
Right now it's kind of in the fifty-one, forty of her salaries and that salary wages.
And the line items that they're spread into, how do you determine which one of those throughout the departments? Is there a separate line item that will say like it's fifty, so it's not.
I didn't do it originally until I got to talk with the mayor and he brought that up and I said, yeah, I probably should create a fifty-one hundred across four.
Across all the four.
They're going to bring out some grants separate too, I think so. When we look at the financial, we can say, okay, there was that much, that big, we can see it, how much is left, you know, without having to bother you about it or nobody to see and they say.
The detail sheets give you a lot of information about each, each department as far as some of the more larger expenditures that are coming from them. No more questions on admin, we'll be moving into police. She's covered a lot of the home aid things this coming year. The one thing in there, dispatching, it's got a, was line item eighty-nine ninety. We've created a new line sixty-one sixty, I think, except making it go, I guess, a bit faster.
I get it more in the expense because it's no longer a transfer fund, it seems to be no longer a carry-up fund. Uh, there was a change made in the police department, I talked to Captain Sealy. He had originally in the detail sheets for police had the camera storage for the original purchase of the fifteen thousand dollars for the software. He had it in contract services. So I moved it up to five thirty-two, I increased that line item and then I decreased contract services. And then when he saw that, he figured out there on his part, but then I had to go back and increase contract services by twelve thousand. So right now that line item five six six oh in police is going to be twenty-seven rather than the fifteen thousand. And that covers their cleaning and. We have the cleaning, our ILeads that we use, our leads online, Xerox, printer, Best control. We also have the storage facility. Our West investigation, which is twenty-four hundred dollars a year. Our, our lead online is another two thousand dollars a year. All goes into that contract services.
And then I think as I understand it, paying for the body cam data storage, the company that we would, we use would supply the body cams at no charge to us, is that correct?
Correct.
So that's pretty good money to just have to pay for the data storage or get all new body cams to handle the audio and video.
You say you're going to create a line item of fifty-one hundred in the whole departments of elected officials?
Well, it'll be admin and the rest will be utilities since admin is a big part of, which is part of the general fund. I didn't see the point of putting in our things and.
It's just a lot of re, it's a lot of.
Plus a really small meal.
Is there a raise figure in the list?
The raise is, we're proposing three percent. Now some of, some of the people, like the fire department, or excuse me, the police department chief has just recently put in a tier system. So those individuals have gotten their raises recently because of the tier, you might talk to that. So they won't get a three percent on what they just got because she found a hundred eighty thousand in savings. We were able to create tiers, so you want to talk to that just.
Yeah, we were, we were able to find the money in the current operating, but, current operating budget, so we were able to go ahead and implement that now. We implemented that at the end of March. And so for the ones that already got that, they will not be getting that three percent this year. So the only ones that are getting the three percent would be the civilians or the, the staff that did not get the raises. So they, they were aware of that when that raise went into effect this year. So, so that was, that was with the money that we were found, the cost savings within our own operating budget this year.
Right.
You might just, because I don't think everybody's aware of how that tier system works. It's like a five-year, you know, five-year increments, I believe.
So the, the step, the step increment is basically every two years, it's every, every two years though. It's, I've forgotten the term, so it's about every two years they'd be getting a raise when, if they're getting their step increment raise, which keeps them in line and keeps their salary. Really, well, the best thing that it does is it really focuses off attention for the departments and it really keeps that, keeps people from getting trained up and getting that talent in their agency and then they'll leave. And so if you look at our agency, we're so young and we don't have a lot of the longevity with only one or two officers that have the years of service here because they get trained and then they get recruited to other agencies. And so it really focuses on, and, and a lot of our officers that got the bigger raises will start seeing those as they, as they get those step raises. So if they're not in the year where they're getting a step increment raise, then they'll, they would get the, the cost of living raise if the city, if the city allows the cost of living raise. So, and then if they are on the year where they get a step increment raise, then they would be able to get that, that addition to that. So it's a, it's a rewarding system of longevity, the longer you stay. You're, you can replay in that, you know, on every, every two years, you're going to be getting a step increment raise as you get two years, four years, six years, eight years, you're on a set schedule. And everybody makes the good, the same amount of money. It's not, it's not a good old boy system. And so I can't come and say, well, I want to give this officer a raise and not this officer a raise. Everyone with two years makes the same amount of money, everyone with four years makes the same amount of money, everyone with six years makes the same amount of money. And so there's no room for any discrepancies, everyone's making the same amount of money.
The good thing about it is in the current budget, we were able to do that without having any increase to the budget. She found the savings in her, in her operational side, so it had little or no effect on that department. Any other questions on police?
The only thing I would have on overtime, chief, in light of your excellent job of getting fully staffed and that should drop our overtime, is that, is that reflecting, is this line item reflecting that?
So the overtime, the hit on the overtime was the twelve-hour schedule. So when the twelve-hour schedule was implemented, because we're not able to go on the eight-day hour, two-week eight-day hour schedule, you have to pay overtime anytime you're over forty hours. And so when they implemented that schedule, Metro was the only agency that has this, that has the law changed that exempts them from the labor law, that allows them to, to utilize a two-week period of eighty hours in the work week without allowing them to pay overtime. So when they have the, when they have a forty-four hour work week, they don't have to pay their overtime because they were able to go and get the law changed for specifically states for Metro Global. And so when it was implemented, we weren't allowed to do that, so we don't fall into that category. So on the weeks that we worked forty-four hours, we had to pay. So on the weeks that we worked forty four hours, we had to pay four, that was four hours of overtime. So that was a huge drain on our agency, so I knew that as soon as we had the bank home, we had to switch off that. And that's why as soon as we were able to get fully staffed, we switched off schedule immediately, which caught, saved us the thirty five thousand dollars in overtime, so that really took us a hit, so our overtime has come down drastically.
But the, and that will be reflected in that line item though for this budget?
Yes, yes, we should see a, a big cost savings in that, and I, I, I don't expect that we're gonna be using that much overtime in, uh.
We probably need to revisit that because you're showing the same balance as last year's budget, I think that's what.
I, I see that there could be definitely a cost savings in that, yes.
That's all I had.
Any other questions on police?
But the, I think the reason that that was left in here was because of some of the details that will be coming up and, and the way that we'll probably stack some of our details, I think that's the way. The reason that that was left in there, just as a, as a precaution, not that we're gonna use that, uh, but it should depend, it's taken out. Uh, I'm definitely a penny venture and don't use money if it's not needed, uh, so if, if it's not needed, it will not be spent.
Thank you, chief.
Recreation, Daniel just talked about some of the current stuff.
Um, I did have to make a change in there. Uh, you see my line item five five two zero, I had to increase that by the forty thousand, which covers the, uh, AC in the gym. And then I removed the sixty thousand, which is the grant funded, uh, project at the, with city and large park. Uh, so I just, all I did was really move on, uh, project that even was gonna, on this year, so just reverse them.
You do what now?
Sir, yeah.
Uh, five five two oh, maintenance repairs, um, to building.
There should be forty eight thousand.
It would be the forty thousand.
Forty or forty eight?
So they need a forty for the air conditioning?
Yeah, so it's the forty for the air conditioning and then I removed the sixty thousand for the, the park. Because right now he's gonna work on a plant and then maybe if we don't get the grant, we can visit it later.
That's seventy one hundred.
That's correct, that's the line item. If that's a grant, Danny, you want to speak to that grant?
It would be the, uh, clean water compensation, the grant, uh, of course, if they put it out in this year, they didn't have it this past year. They kept the money for the state, uh, to grow up and use, frankly, to take care of the parts that we do, park project, but, uh, they didn't let us, let me apply for that money. Uh, so they opened it up again, I would like to apply for that to cover the costs for the renovations to the first chamber with the large park. It's pretty much gonna be a complete renovation, um, of the park, new playground equipment.
New basketball court.
Parking area, fencing, everything, uh, before the rock check, uh, it's, it's put together, just getting bored down there, it was never initially set up correctly. Uh, and the playground equipment is, um, thirty years old, uh, so it's definitely showing its age, uh, but that's what the project would entail.
So that's basically a wash.
Tracy, you're saying that when we get the next copy of this, you, you've taken some other projects out where it's, they're dependent on grant only, I think that's what you're saying.
Right, uh, that one I had taken out the wrong one, so it's a twenty thousand dollar difference to do it.
You assume the detail sheet just shows it's a grant. We'll get the fire to show that, we've done some of that with our department too. And then your notice under, uh, land acquisition, you're showing a repayment for recreation for ten thousand, is that, is that a part of that?
Mm-hmm, uh. There's Jason, I don't know, our state community park, that renovation and then that.
Oh, okay, yeah, it's not related to the other.
No, it's not, it's repayment of something this, uh, this year.
It's part of that hundred thirty thousand that was spending at the community park.
Yeah.
Any other questions on recreation? Pool is pretty straightforward, that's pretty consistent, I think you have, you have some of your lifeguards a little bit of a raise, because you have some, several that are. Veterans that are coming back year after year.
I guess the veteran, it's getting harder to start guards at, uh, the rates that you're starting because all the businesses are starting their parts have been much higher and, of course, they have it here fast. So we're gonna have to start our guards, which actually have to pay that certification, if you be lifeguards, out of their pocket, uh, paid them more what they're worth. Something we have to have, so we have to get the, um, the admin in there to take care of the baking.
Where do you start them at now?
We're starting at nine dollars an hour.
First, first, first?
First year hour, then as you know, quarter increase for each year, that's worth.
Okay, any other questions on the pool? If not, we're going to, uh, the fire department. Chief, I know on the detail sheets you've got a homeland security grant for, uh, purchase of air monitors, I think. And then also, uh, one of your major things is a truck to replace a truck, you might, you talked about that last week.
We're, we're showing the running for the grant on the fire conference, you know, for open air, getting time on that one. If, if we don't get it, it's not gonna be any more, we can just juggle around a little bit and so forth, make that track last another year or so. It's a nineteen ninety three, um, looking at the closing, because it's got some age on it, it's a great area.
So you won't see that actually in the budget, it's, it's, it's an F line out on the grant, but then you've got homeland security, a thirty thousand dollar grant. You were hoping to get on replacement of some air monitors and you feel like pretty, might, pretty good in running on that. And then you have asked for a, uh, one of the major items, a truck to replace your expedition, I think, seven years ago.
They, the two thousand and six expedition has, uh, we've got a hundred thirty thousand miles on it, they put a lot of money into it last year, commercialized. And one of my mechanics now says it's starting to develop, so it's, uh, it's seats are pretty well shot in it.
It doesn't go very many, long miles, it just goes often, a lot of, a lot of short trips. There's a lot of wear and paint, you just don't see it as much, uh, but it's costly, it's in and out, in and out, in and out.
And we've been the past, I think you should, chief, from our, our picture on that. I think you should, if I ask for credit inspections and so forth, so people can get out of a lot of ground now in the past.
That's, that's the reason you see that line item in for the, uh, truck, uh, seventy one forty. And then you also may see, uh, and these are gonna be subject to, uh, an amendment later on, but, uh, line item, uh, eighty nine ninety. The twenty thousand dollars, that's their portion of the repayment of the, uh, one point seven million for the, uh, purchase of the nuclear property. The other property was there, they're, they're only related to the nuclear acquisition and percentage of that purchase. We spread that out over twenty thousand since that's an actual building renovation and so forth. But that's subject to change once we get actual cost of the renovation, uh, for that building and, uh, anything else we do on that property related to the fire department. Just going in for the repayment of the acquisition of the property is gonna add twenty thousand a year to their budget. Of course, all, all of these new projects, they'll all be, before you all, after we have the, uh, plans done and ask for bids and so forth, before we get into that. Any other questions, chief, on fire? If not, to go over to, uh, finance. I think Tracy, you want to talk maybe about the one position you're gonna kind of move into that department and kind of share some, some of your, uh, workload between that and I think, uh.
Probably her.
Don't think so as well, so. The IT?
Uh, she already has a lot with IT. Uh, currently we have a, uh, receptionist in the cable department, cable internet, and she also takes phone calls for Joe Miller. Uh, so we're gonna move that person, so nothing changes, the ladies are still gonna be split, she's gonna do the exact same duties, but she's gonna go in under my department. Because she does do some of the financial in the building for like our son internet that we have to do, so she already understands what we do on our point or on my side. But it'll also allow me to have someone to back up the building clerk. Uh, I know years ago when I would do that job, you couldn't take off two weeks out of the whole month, you always had to be there, um, sometimes three weeks out of the month, you had to be there. Uh, so that'll help, and then also, um, our building clerk will help this, this person with, uh, the duties that she does, Ken, I'll be able to send them on. It'd be nice to have somebody that could send to training, to learn how to do tech support on these HD boxes, it's constantly changing and, to be honest, I couldn't even tell you myself how it. But it gets frustrating for the CSRs when they're not sure what they do, or they'll put in a service ticket and come to find out if they had told them this deck, it would have alleviated the service cost. So the, the salary is what she currently makes now, so that's the only reason that it's set the way it is.
You've got a person in this position now?
Mm-hmm.
Who does this?
Tracy Whitmore.
Any other, any other questions on the admin, excuse me, finance? Then I guess like most of your people would be eligible for the three percent, cost of living raise, because they're already, they haven't got any tiers that does. Okay, uh, street department? Jessica's talking about the sidewalk projects in there, uh, also of course our annual, uh, paying, uh, you know, two of the, some of the main, main items expenditures in that department.
The insurance, twenty three thousand, I think this year there's something.
I've been looking at the health insurance on the street side and it's.
Your budget is eight, nine thousand, I guess.
Yeah, that's the number that's always been, but it's always been like almost triple what's been budgeted.
We need a budget more than?
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing. But I also want to look at how it's allocated to whom, because it's based on the employees that are in those departments. Some of those departments, they're listed in the street, but they don't actually work in the street.
First of all, retirement, I agree, well, you got double the debts, I guess, I think when you did this, you didn't, we didn't know what the law will make or what. You had a budget last year thirty thousand, this year so far it's thirty three, and you've got a budget sixty nine.
Yeah, we need to take a look at that, those two line items, uh, fifty one sixty and, uh, fifty one eighty, I think.
Why was I, why did you, could you tell me, Ken, why, uh, it was thirty thousand one, you had fifty one sixty? It's, it's, it's three times as much as it, uh. You had a budget nine thousand, and through, and through, uh, the third quarter, it's twenty three thousand, then the mayor's proposed budget was seventy five, but what's?
That's where I want to look at who's being charged, those are the employees that, Jessica may have some that are listed, they predominantly work in the street, but they may not, and they probably need to be, uh, allocated somewhere else. But every year it's always been budgeted between eight and ten thousand dollars and it's always double what's budgeted.
That needs to be addressed.
And I missed this, I guess, on the, going back to the finance, you might need to look at the two retirements, social security and everything on fifty one eighty and fifty two hundred, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the same situation in finances occurred here.
Well, the retirement's gonna go down because that's part of the wages that we spread across.
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right, that's, that's what that is, okay. Now, that, that's, that's sincere.
But on, on the street, on streets, you might not have to maybe either increase that or find out.
Yeah.
How this employee should be allocated.
Yeah, some of these are hard to compare since we're changing our method of counting them.
Right.
I know that's kind of been in the past sometimes, I know, like Ben's tried to do a better job this past year with making sure that his, in public works. That his employees are coding their, their work on where they're working that day, because it is so systematic, you know, it's not consistent every day. It's not like today I'm holding the water plant and I'm working that night and I shift. You know, one day they might be working, uh, installing water line, another day they might be doing sewer tunnel work, another day they might be doing salvage repairs, and those are three distinct departments. Uh, so it's not like you're just, I'm only gonna do water meter installation, I'm only gonna do, uh, you know, painting curb. These guys are cross-trained in, across the board, so he's been trying to, so probably over the last two or three years, it's been all over the place because it's trying to predict what's gonna be the need. You know, how many breaks are you gonna have, so you have a budgeted amount in your water budget, and in the past years, it might not have changed, we might have been overbuilding street, but the guys have been working the water, uh, you know, according to.
Make sure that gets an order for that.
Right, so that's what we're, we're trying to allocate, and this year they probably, so we're, have done more in the street side because they were working on, we used our own crews to do the swamp project, which we don't allocate. So it could be a little all over the place, even though I budgeted the project and they were off the seventy three hundred, it might show a different overall wage overall. Whereas you're going out and see the whole seventy three hundred line item being used, but their wage might be higher than we predicted. It's maybe some of that going on, I don't know. I'll get with Tracy to be fair exactly how some of these folks are allocated, but I do know in public works, those individuals are harder to predict, you know. You try to, and have always been allocated appropriately, you know. If we looked at, once upon a time, we even built a, we designed a vehicle, then it was like, oh my goodness, I almost hacked the fleet with being charged to water. So, but that turns out it wasn't really that, it was just probably an old machine, how it was allocated, you know, jumped up, so trying to reconcile some of that allocation.
I think she's trying to say we need to be better at our paperwork and, uh, maybe then.
Just maybe talking to each other maybe a little bit or probably, but help us, but.
Also, Jessica, you know, this year's budget, you've got the grant in there for that multi-use sidewalk project, just, you're only carrying over our part of that grant. And this year, fiscal year on seventy three oh one, that's just our part of the map and fifty thousand sidewalks, and we may have to carry over part of that grant because we're not gonna get that far into that, so.
Right, and Ken, I was, did this budget, you know, in April, or about April first, so I wasn't sure how much we were gonna get done.
So you may have to carry over that grant, that grant money, I mean, there might be a little bit of the expense, we've got HBR already doing it for us, but what's left, you better add that to that line item.
Right, I think right now we're, I just was starting my, uh, reimbursement application, I think we've spent thirty thousand dollars in engineering fees so far. The proposal was for, I think, seventy, uh, the overall project was, I think, uh, around, uh, seven hundred, somewhere in that ballpark, sixty ninety, seventy ninety.
Right, accounting match.
Mm-hmm, including the grant match and what we were gonna pay, I just know in my head it was a hundred thirty eight thousand what we were responsible for.
Well, just get into that and you need to make, uh, move some more money from that grant into this, this budget, right.
Right, carry a little more. For sure. For sure.
Any other questions on the street?
On, on your paving, have you already identified the, the streets you're going to pave?
We're this coming here.
Because you usually give us that list later on, a year.
I do, I, we started to drive, we started creating our list, uh, last week. I'm trying to finalize and predict again, we're talking about fuel costs going up, that affects the cost of asphalt pretty directly. And so, I'm trying to predict what that this coming bid might be to figure out how much money I'm going to need. But I have started creating that list of streets, there's a, um, there's a lot of streets, there's definitely just a lot of streets that need, so. We have started doing something, uh, trying to create with our G I S system, going back and taking our Excel spreadsheets, where we've tracked which streets we've paved and when we've paved them, and we're trying to do a map overlay, so we can visually see how long it's been that certain segments have been paved. And it's pretty interesting, some of them show up just like what we were showing, oh, yeah, we had fifteen years ago, that was a street we have paved, and look at showing up on my list. Others are showing up, you know, on my list that maybe are only eight years old or ten years old, and then there's some that aren't showing up at all, and they're twenty, so, where we've not ever paid them yet, because they were, it's a residential street, they don't get as much traffic, but we're definitely looking at those lists and trying to adjust, like, I think my list is longer than what I think I'm going to be able to get done, just because of that asphalt cost, but.
Okay, and I think the last one we need to look at is Kovak and, uh, General Fund, that's not, you got to have some through your pages down over the part that's not right.
Looks like one major change is that we don't have to put the, the heat in there.
Did I skip that, right, I thought you were skipping over the money bit.
Yeah, it was after fire, it was after fire. Well, I messed up last week, so I didn't say anything.
I was looking at this list on the general fund, I saw Kovak, I knew we had to talk about, we haven't got, but we, uh.
It looks like it's fairly simple, it hasn't changed much over the roof, I mean, uh, air conditioning.
One of them, and I mentioned to the mayor, I can't remember, the head start, we actually, one of the listings were up and up, and they renewed in July. Uh, I don't know if the lady does it as far as they pay, um.
You say it's quite a bit?
Hi?
You said it's quite a bit they pay?
No, I said in July, we can, we need to have a new agreement.
Oh, okay.
For worries, either, I think it might be the head start.
I'm curious, is it start?
Any other questions on Kovak? So, that, that I think we're finished.
You don't cover the cemetery fund, since it's all about soap?
We can, we can.
It's kind of is what it is too.
I'm married.
A lot of expression there.
Mary had some questions earlier, so I didn't ask her many of them, all right. Thanks.
I need to adjust to that, just what you told me, and that's let's get it on.
I could tell.
I closed down my system, didn't work out the grant.
Well, one of the big questions you had was the beginning balance of a hundred and five. That is the investment that, I think I came to the cemetery meeting, was it last year? And we, we said, um, right now, we're going to be fine for this year, but going forward, we need to start, um, transferring money from admin, like so much year, to put back into that CD, because that's what the cemetery budget uses for their money, is that investment.
So, there's still one more year, who can that investment get?
You can, yeah, right now, it's a hundred and five, the investment actually grew a little bit, the rates were pretty good. Um, so, if you look at that versus what revenues, plus there was way a bit more revenue that came in, um, I don't want to say that.
I don't know where this, they're going, they're going to run out of money.
So, we got, you know, we get through this year, it looks like we're going to end with sixty-two thousand, so next year, we may have to add, make a transfer.
I was thinking, so, I thought that was going to be used up, okay, a year on.
Yeah, yeah, I would, it did look like that last year, it looked pretty rough.
So, we're spending a hundred and five thousand, and we're making about sixty-some odd thousand. A forty thousand dollar deficit a year.
And maybe next year, we might have to do more money, but maybe every year after that, just do a, a increment, so that we're constantly putting money into that fund.
Right. Okay. Any other questions on cemetery? Um, that, that'd be enough on this part of the budget. And we go on utilities, from next, next, I got a couple other things I want to say, people are going to have a pretty good deceiving. Just a few, uh, if everybody's okay with that, everybody had enough budgets this evening, general fund.
All right.
All right.
Just a couple announcements, um, it's an annual event, but they're going to have a Memorial Day service at the cemetery at eleven AM on Monday. Uh, we just got, they officially told us that today, we already knew, Wes Phelps been working up there, getting things ready. Um, Second Vincent DePaul's, uh, is going to have, they just hit the one million pound mark as a, uh, food pantry. And they're going to have June third on Sunday, just a reception from one o'clock to two, two PM at their, um, at the pantry, breaded life, uh, pantry, they've, uh, distributed a million pounds since they've been in business. That's a heck of a compliment, just moved. And then, um, got noticed, I think this week, that Randy Mauser has been hired as the new Main Street Director. So, she's to start, I think, this week, so, she's the new Main Street Director, I think they're really excited about having, having her join the Main Street program. So, that's all the announcements I had, unless anybody else has anything else, any other announcements? If not, then I'm going to take a motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
Motion that Councilman Kelly on second.
Second.
Councilman, hold there, a discussion.